Call to order the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, at 7:05 PM. Please join me in the pledge. Troxel, would you please read the roll call?
Yes, we have Councilwoman Arvina Arvinitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Absent.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel.
Present.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of myself, Rob and Arvinitis, Kevin Conley, and Rob Getzloff, who is not here today. First on the agenda are the minutes of the August 9th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President. Motion to approve claims.
We have a motion. Aye, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero on claims. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any reports regarding the Water Works Board?
No reports.
Thank you. Are there any council member reports regarding the Water Works Board meeting?
No.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is the water agenda, right?
Yes.
The adversarial hearing in Indianapolis, the administrative hearing, has been concluded on the Indiana American proceeding. That matter is now fully tried. It is in briefing and filing stage.
Thank you.
We were part of that.
Thank you for the report. Next on the agenda, there is no old business, there is no new business. Do we have any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. The time is 7:10 PM. The Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire council, so we'll bring in council members Tom Schmidt and Caleb Johnson into the roll call. Okay, first on the agenda, minutes of the August 9th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is four zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claims? No additional claims, Mr. President. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is four zero. Any staff on redevelopment? Mr. Hanson, can you give us an update on downtown redevelopment, Riverfront District?
Sure. The 22 West Joliet Street request for proposals is ready to go out, so that should be going out probably next week. That's the development right next year to the town hall, to the west. And the Riverfront, Mr. Austin is working on an ordinance for that, so that should be upcoming as well.
All right, exciting news. It's great to hear. Any other staff reports on redevelopment?
No reports.
Okay, council members, anything on redevelopment?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have, we don't have any old business or new business, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
To call to order the Utility Board meeting on Wednesday, September 20th, excuse me, September 13th, 2023, at 7:11 PM. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting. First on the agenda are the minutes of the August 9th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So move on, claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims, motion carries four to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports regarding the Utility Board. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports.
Are there any council member reports regarding the Utility Board?
No.
There is no old business, there is no new business. Do we have any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, September 13th, at approximately 7:12 PM. The call, the roll call will stay the same as the Utility Board with the four members that are here this evening. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the August 9th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Next item is claims. Any additional claims for the Town Council, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Next items, reports. We'll start off to the left. Chief Patterson from the Fire Department.
No.
Chief Sormas from the Police Department.
Nothing tonight.
Deputy Chief Steve McAmeyer.
No reports.
Our Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have two events this weekend at Rita Park. We have Mr. Skellington's party in the park Friday from 5:00 to 10:00. That was rescheduled. And then Saturday, we have our Country Affair combined with the Corn Roast. That was rescheduled from July, so that's now the Shererville Country Corn Roast Affair, and that's from 12:00 to 7:00 PM. That's all.
Thank you, John. Chad Nandorf from Public Works. Andy from Operations.
No reports.
And Town Manager Jim Gorman.
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any reports from council members?
None.
Reports. At this time, we'll take public comments regarding just the gen items. Is there any public comments regarding the gen items? No public comments. We'll move, we'll move right into old business. We have one item of old business. Item A is a request to access the town property to repair material containment wall behind Smith Concrete on Route 41. The petitioner is Richie Ruth from Target Rentals. The location is 1,001 US Highway 41. It was deferred from our June 14th, 2023 meeting, and our July 12th, 2023 meeting, and our August 9th, 2023 meeting. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is town property that Mr. Ruth would like to enter onto to repair a containment wall, that retain, that containment wall that's been there about 25 years. It's, it's fallen over part of it, so he would like to access our property to do some maintenance, maintenance on that wall. He couldn't be here tonight, but he do has a representative here in, in Mr. Vogman. He's gonna, if you have any questions about, we, we do have an agreement that Mr. Austin created, and both parties have agreed to that agreement, and I think we're ready to roll on this.
Mr. Gorman, and, and I, I think the biggest hesitation on this the last couple of months had been the agreement on the contract that had to be written up by Mr. Austin to, to allow him to come on our town property and do the work and to fix the wall the, the way it is now.
Correct.
And, and I understand that in, in the agreement, we have a amount that is, needs to be paid by the, by Mr. Ruth for the legal expense that, that was involved.
Yeah, we have in the agreement a maximum of $2,000. We do have the final numbers. It's $1,487.50, and I do believe that the petitioner agreed to that.
Any comments from the board?
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the request to access town property to repair material containment wall behind Smith Concrete. The petitioner is Rich Ruth, Target Rentals, location 1,001 US Highway 41.
I'll second.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Austin.
Robyn, would you consider adding and to enter into the agreement as presented?
Yes. Would you like me to repeat that?
Sorry, we didn't hear that, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry. And to enter into the agreement that has been discussed.
And turn to the agreement that has been discussed. Yes, thank you.
My second is so amended.
We have, we have a motion and a second for discussion, Mr. Austin, and then should that motion also include the amount of money for the legal fees?
It does. It says not to exceed $2,000. That's the term that's in there, and.
Can we change that motion to the amount that it is?
You can do anything you want.
The exact, I would need the exact amount. I'd like to add to the motion that the amount is $1,487.
50 cents.
50 cents. Thank you.
So we have a motion, we, we have amendment to the motion.
And a second.
And we have a second by Mr. Conley with the amended motion. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. President, we have Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Arvinitis.
Yes.
Councilman Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries three, one. Thank you. Next item is new business, is ordinance 1995 and ordinance establishing the current travel policy for the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, replacing all existing ordinances, resolutions, and policies or parts thereof, including ordinance number 1515 in conflict here with and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman. Or, or maybe Mr. Tro.
Yeah, we recently.
Either one.
Recently discovered that this ordinance, there's a little bit of verbiage that does not, you know, make any sense, so we're gonna, we're gonna amend that ordinance, so I, I'd think you guys should defer this till next month.
Motion to defer.
Second.
What, okay, thank you, Mr. Gorman. We have a motion to defer and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero to defer next meeting to update some of the items on it. Next item is, item B is, is actually a public hearing. The public hearing is a proposed 2024 town budget, ordinance number 1996. Mr. Austin is the proof of publication.
That would be Mr. Trox.
I'm sorry, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Schmidt, as you stated, this is the notice to taxpayers regarding the 2024 proposed budget, and this is the first of three hearings that will be held at the town municipal proposed 2024 budget. It's a public hearing, and citizens will get any opportunity to speak. This meeting notice needed to be submitted through the State Gateway Program at least 10 days prior to tonight's meeting, and it was submitted on Thursday, August 31st, 2023. There are copies here of that proposed budget in anyone's packet here, and basically, Councilman President, you need to call for oral or written remonstrations regarding it, open the public hearing to the public here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel, and at this time, I will open it to the public. Is there any public comments on the proposed town budget ordinance number 1996? At this time, we'll close it to the public. Any comments from the Town Council?
Not at this time.
No comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Austin.
Mike, whom will the other two times be that you're gonna share this with the public?
Yeah, the, the next scheduled time for adoption of this proposed budget would be Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, and the next meeting would be is when we are, we receive the notification from the Department of Local Government Finance when they approved the budget at their end. Scheduled at a later time then, toward the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure of the board, this is, and by the way, this is a first reading?
Motion to approve ordinance number 1996.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item C is considered a variance of use to allow a drive-through lane within the US 41 Commercial Corridor Overlay District. It was a border zoning case number 23-8-12. The petitioner is Boulevard Square LLC, Al Krieger from Stan's Donuts. Location is 1020 US 41 in the Boulevard Square Plan Unit Development. It's a BZ, it came from a BZ favorable recommendation of four to zero. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a driveway request from Stan Donuts that came with a favorable recommendation, as you mentioned. The building is located in the northeast corner of the parking lot of the original Menards complex. Part of that redevelopment way back when, they also had a sidewalk plan that will be finished when this will finish, there was already a proposed outlot to go in there. Stan's Donuts was the one that's going in there, and part of their plan was to put sidewalks in all along Willowbrook, and then all along Eagle Ridge on the west side of the property, and we have a sidewalk connectivity project going on there shortly, so they should be working in there in the next couple of weeks. So part of that is, he's gonna try to do that at the same time, so that'll loop in Stone Bridge to be able to get to the Pansy though, and then from the movie theaters or from the Aldi, that'll all tie in together, so the sidewalks will be, will all be connected. I'm not sure if Mr. Krieger is here tonight.
He's not.
Or a representative from Stan's. Doesn't look like it.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I move to approve BZ case 23-8-12, including all findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on border zoning case 23-8-12. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Next item is item D is considered a donation to the Shererville Baseball League for $855.36. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the, the Shererville Baseball 10U, Shererville Baseball Team, they approached us to ask if we had any pins that we purchased probably 15 years ago. We did not have any, so they went and purchased their own, and I guess they had a pin swap program with all the other teams, and they purchased 400 pins with the Shererville logo on it to represent our town, and they would like us to make a donation to pay for those pins. It came with a favorable recommendation from the donation committee, and that's what's in front of you tonight. I'm not sure if anybody from Shererville Baseball is here. Doesn't look like it.
I just like, yeah, I'd like to make one comment. It was, it was a, a great tournament. I mean, the, the town of Shererville was full of, I think, 40 teams that came? Is that correct?
Yeah, they were from all over.
They're all over from the country, and, and we benefited townwide for like four days.
Yeah, they did win their division, and then they went to the World Series, which was in Grand Point, I believe, and did fairly well there, too.
Motion to approve the donation to the Shererville Baseball League for $855.36.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item E is considered a donation to the Logan's Love for $1,250. Once again, Mr. Gorman?
Thank you. Logan's Love is seeking this donation to purchase Ben's Blue Bags to go inside every squad car in the tri-town area, and they had their walk, I think it was last weekend or the weekend before. It was very successful. They ended up surpassing that amount, put a bag in every squad car in Dyer, St. John, and Shererville. So their new goal is to equip every squad car in Lake County, so they are looking for a donation to keep that, keep that going. And I believe there is a representative from Logan's Love here tonight, if you have any questions for her. Yeah, go ahead, come on up.
Please, please state your name and address.
Nicole Revoliotis.
Hey Nicole, can you just pull that down a little bit? There you go.
Nicole Revoliotis. My address, you said?
Yeah.
1325 Deer Creek Drive, Dyer.
This is Logan's mom, right?
Yes.
And Georgiana Glavitt, 1727 Chelsea Street.
Thank you.
If you want to talk about the program a little bit, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. First off, we wanted to thank everybody that came out. We wanted to thank the Dyer Parks for allowing us to have it there. Shererville, I share them, St. Dyer, Shererville Parks, and then the Shererville Fire Department and Shererville Police, but we are, we started this foundation, you know, for special needs children, and then we came up with this idea for the Ben's Blue Bags to put them all in the squad cars, and Robyn helped us with that. And that helps to, helps with special needs childrens, and it has sensory items, and it also comes with this really great training system, training the police or the fire department, whichever ones we put them in, but we are working right now with the police. So our goal is to get the whole Lake County trained.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chief Sormas, do you have any comment on that?
Oh yeah, we participated in the walk two weeks ago at, over here at the Committee Center. I think it's a great cause, and I believe that's similar to like when officers used to have teddy bears in the cars in a common children on after an accident, but this is more sensory items for autistic children, and I think it definitely benefit the officers having that tool in their car when they come across that situation.
We also added communication devices in them as well, because a lot of children are nonverbal, and this helps to be able to communicate.
And once the goal is achieved, we do have a training program for all our officers in our department to go through that training with the foundation there.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Can you tell us how many bags you're at?
Right now, at 200, 240, 240. Yeah.
Great job.
Yes, thank you. We did surpass our goals in every way, with everybody's help and generosity, and we want to thank everybody for supporting autism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this donation amount, just so I know, that, that's 10 bags, right?
Correct.
St. Sher, too. I'm sure that. Mr. President, motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to consider the donation to Logan's Love for $1,250. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Next item is consider September 17th to September 23rd, 2023 as Constitution Week in the town of Shererville. And I have a proclamation to read, to honor that. This proclamation is Constitution Week of 2023, the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It was led by James Madison, George Washington, and Benjamin Franklin. These brilliant men created a new form of government that became the standard for self-government into the world, and as whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, and whereas the public law 915 guarantees the issue of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating 17, September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Schmidt, the President of the Town Council, Shererville, Indiana, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in the town of Shererville, and urge all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being American with all the rights and responsibilities with the privilege involves. In witness where have, I herein too set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Shererville to be affixed this day, the 13th day of September of the year of our Lord 2023, signed Thomas J. Schmidt, the Town Council President, and attested by our Clerk Treasurer, Mike Troxel.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Next item is item G is considered that September 18th to the September 24th, 2023 as the National Rail Safety Week in the town of Shererville. We have a proclamation for that also that I will read into the record. It's a proclamation for the National Rail Safety Week for the town of Shererville. Whereas 2,194 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 803 personal injuries and were responsible for 274 fatalities in the United States during the year of 2022, and whereas 1,208 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 656 pedestrians being killed and another 550 injured while trespassing on railroad property right-of-way during the year of 2022. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that rural, railroad right-of-ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while Neil Railroad, railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce ethical laws in support of the National Rail Safety Week. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Schmidt, the President of the Town Council of Shererville, Indiana, do hereby attest my full support proclaiming September 18th to the 24th, 2023 National Rail Safety Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. It's dated this day of the 13th day of September, 2023, and is attested by Thomas J. Schmidt, the President of the Town Council, and attested by our Clerk Treasurer, Mike Troxel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Next item is item H is consider the acceptance of donations. Mr. Troxel, would you be happy to read those donations?
You're doing such a fine job, Mr. President. You want to continue? I, I can do it, no problem. We've, as President Schmidt mentioned, we collected in the month of August, $4,155, and it is broken down this way to the police fund. Kathleen Schultz, Davis Batters, Hendrickson, Rolowski, and Girdos donated $50. To the K9 Fund, and we have three donations here. Miss Lane's donation sold over $1,290. The T-shirts and hooded sweatshirt fundraiser for K9s was $520, and a K9 fundraiser for 260, for a total to the K9, it was $2,070. To the VIPS program, we have a, there were two donations each for $1,000, for a total $2,000 to the VIPS donation program, and National Night Out, and Ed Jewell donated $35. Total, again, donations monetary were $4,155.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Motion to approve donations.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second on donation. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Before I open up business from the floor, I did have one comment. Chad, I was wanting for you to give us an update on the culvert work that's going on by the post office.
There is 18 total sections of 10 by 7 feet concrete box. There is 18 total sections of 10 by 7 feet, concrete box covert going to be installed underneath Eagle Ridge Drive. They have 10 of those sections in as part of this work, the water main and sanitary force main from the lift station over near Giuseppe's will be replaced portions of that tonight, and then they can finish the rest of the box covert work, we're probably two weeks out from getting concrete crews in or to re-pour the curbs and extend the sidewalk connectivity in that section, and then Reeve Riley will be our small patch contractor to get the road paved, and Public Works will be performing restoration.
Thank you, Mr. Nana. Appreciate it. At this time, at this time, I'll open business from the floor. Is there any comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Please step up and name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council. My name is Giovanni Viedgus. I own a property in Ward 5 of 2914 Morningside Drive, Crown Point, which is within the Shererville City Limits. I'm proud to say and claim that I'm a registered Republican, and I've voted Republican since the day I achieved that honor when I turned 18. I'd like to begin today by stating that ignorance of the law is not a valid defense. There may be some here today that may argue in a court of law before a judge or magistrate. However, I've found in my training as a duly sworn officer of the law, both in the public and private sector, that that statement be true and valid. Furthermore, I would like to read from the Shererville, Indiana Code of Ordinances, Section 6-20, Keeping of Animals Classified as Farm Animals. The ordinance states the keeping of animals classified as farm animals that are, A, no person shall only possess or have custody on his premises, any animal classified as a farm animal, such as, but not limited to, horses, pigs, goats, and chickens. No person shall keep or permit to be kept any farm animal as a pet. My wife, Ashley, as many in this room know, ran in the Republican primary this year, and while canvassing for my wife, it was brought to our attention that there were farm animals on the property of a council member. Councilmember Johnson, I ask you, is this true?
It is.
It was brought to our attention during the same time that the code enforcement officer for this town was dispatched at the request of a member of this council to the home of a resident in this town, a taxpayer, for the sole purpose of citing and advising that family, they must do away with their possession and farm animals. I began by stating that I'm a proud Republican, and I've voted that way for nearly two decades. Am I supposed to believe that the chairman of the Republican Party of the town, and in this district, is someone who believes that the law is for thee and not for me? Are we to, are we to believe that we raise our children to harbor virtue, morality, conservatism, and the family, so our elected leaders can sit in positions of authority like a Pontius Pilate and stand judgment over those who are their constituents? They represent whilst they act not in the best interest of those constituents, but in the best interest of themselves. I do not claim to be perfect. God and my wife will both attest to that. I do have my faults, but I would be darned to sit in a position of authority where I represent the majority of individuals and cast judgment and integrity on one hand, and hold selfishness and dishonesty on the other. Chairman, I yield back the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Is there any other business from the floor? Hi Kathy.
Hi Kathy.
Hello, everyone. I am coming up with Steve Bremer, the Dave Chapter 17 Commander, and Bob Carnegie, this DAV State Commander, and before we go on, I'm here for two pieces of business. One is, I just wanted to let you know that this coming Saturday, I know you have your corn roast and that big event on Saturday, but on, but this Saturday at 1:30 at Dyer Central Park, they are having a dedication, the Woody Williams Foundation Gold Star Families Memorial, and this memorial, they just put it in yesterday, and if you, I've seen pictures of it, it's beautiful, but I'm going to let Bob Carnegie tell you a little bit of, just a little bit about that and the importance of it, but this Gold Star Family Memorial, there's only 126 in the state, and the closest one is from here is in Indianapolis. So to have this is really an honor to have it in the township, and so I wanted to invite you or to let you know about this, and we have some flyers, and the town of Dyer does know that I was inviting you tonight as well, so, but I'm going to let Bob just tell you quickly.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to share some information with you. I didn't know who Woody Williams was until a couple of years ago. I don't know how many people in this room has ever heard that name. He is the last surviving Medal of Honor winner from World War II. He was at the, when they like broke ground for this eight or nine years ago, he showed up in Dyer for that event. He since has passed. Woody won his Medal of Honor on Iwo Jima. There were roughly 10,000 people that were killed on Iwo Jima, a combination of US and Japanese, and the very, very important flag to the Marine Corps of where the, when the flag is being hoisted up on a, on a flagpole on top of a rock in Iwo Jima, which is in, memorialized in Washington DC at a beautiful park, was something that was done on Iwo Jima. Woody, as he went on in later years, was fortunate enough to create a foundation and have a lot of help, and when, building these types of monuments that are going into Dyer, and it's to recognize the fallen heroes all over the United States that represented our country and passed during different conflicts. You very, very, you folks are very, very honored to have something like this in your community, particularly it honors a certain segment of our country, but it also is brought to you by somebody who absolutely gave his ultimate, and I would encourage you, you may not be able to be there Saturday, but make sure you get by to take a look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and the second reason we are here is first of all, just to say thank you for your support for the DAV Walk. It, and I know I'm speaking for Bob and Steve and as well as me, that it was really, you guys, the, the town was wonderful to work with, and Jim and Andy and Chief Sormas, they, along with Bob and Steve, did this, so you would have thought, they planned it and they organized it and coordinated it so well that you would have thought we've been doing it for years, and it was a great turnout. We had, I think Bob said 125, and that came, that registered, and that was up from our first one, and we do, it was perfect, having the St. John Township War Memorial, and then going to the 9/11 Memorial, and then going to Frieder Park, and so I already spoke to the guys and asked about us doing this again here in the town of Shererville next year, and so we would like to have it that this, the Saturday before Labor Day, Labor Day weekend, and do that again. So we're going to start moving forward to plan that unless, you know, you have anything to say about that or objections, but otherwise, that's what we're going to do, and again, I want to say thank you to all of you and for all that you did, and we couldn't have done it without you. So I am going to turn this over to Bob and Steve. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, so it was a very good day, perfect weather, everything worked out perfect. So we, we at the DAV want to thank you guys. It was a great event. You guys supported us so much that day, so it was, it was, it did seem like it was something we've been doing for a long time. So it worked out really good. So we really wanted to thank you for that, and so we got something for you guys. So we want to present you with this award. No, is it award? Yeah, I think it's award. So it's presented to the Shererville Town Council for your unwavering support to our organization and your dedicated volunteerism on August 2023, DAV 17 Walk. We are so grateful for your commitment to our mission and cannot thank you enough for making it possible. So I want to present this to you guys.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy and Jim, can you make sure Kathy gets on the schedule for next year for that?
She's already on it. And in closing, I would like to let you know exactly what the DAV means, and that's Disabled American Veterans. To be part of the DAV, you have to have something that happened to you while you were serving that caused you to have some type of a disability. In the state of Indiana, there are 14,000 active members. Across the United States, there are a million four, a million four active members to the DAV. It's a very special group because we help other veterans, even though we are part of this group and may have our own disabilities, all we do is help other veterans. So by coming here, doing an event and a walk like this, we want you and the community to know, we really, really, really care about our brothers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other business from the floor? Any other business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.